Good afternoon and welcome to the November regular meeting of the Calgary Police Commission. I call this meeting to order and ask that everyone ensure your microphones are muted until you need to speak. My name is Amtel Siddiqui. At our commission's annual organizational meeting earlier today, my colleagues gave me the honor of being the next chair of our commission. I'm looking forward to serving this new role, but I also know that I have very big shoes to fill. Cher Chong Cornet has led our commission through many challenging issues over the past few years and has always done it with grace, humility, and a gift for building consensus. As she transitions back to being a commissioner, I am so thankful that we are not losing her talents, expertise, and leadership. We are going to need those things more than ever in the years to come. Thank you so much, Sean, for all you have given to our commission these last few years. We are a better board because of your contributions as chair. At our meeting today, I'm also joined by Commissioners Sue Mallon, Shereen Nice and Jordan, Kelly Ogle, Samuel Hope, Rob Tenge, Ayu Idiran, and Councillors Jennifer Wyness and Terry Wong. We also have the pleasure of welcoming two new Commissioners. Commissioners Erin Nogo and Marcia Hanson were appointed by City Council at the end of October, and we are very excited to have both of you joining our board. Welcome. Today's Calgary Police Service representatives are led by Chief Constable Mark Newfeld. On his behalf, Superintendent Rashid, would you please introduce those who you expect to speak during today's meeting?
Good afternoon, Chair. Thank you very much, and thank you for hosting members of the Calgary Police Service. So introducing the leadership team from my left to right, we have Chief People Officer Kim Armstrong, Superintendent Clara Smart, Senior Financial Officer Sabrina Locance, Deputy Chief Chad Toffick, Chief Constable Mark Newfeld, Deputy Chief Katie McClellan, Deputy Chief Corey Daly, Deputy Chief Raj Gill, Executive Director Catherine Murphy, Acting Director Dr. Amory Hamilton Henry, and Director Michael Nun. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. For those not familiar with our role, our commission is a body of 10 community members and two city councillors appointed by City Council and the Government of Alberta. We provide independent citizen governance and oversight of the Calgary Police Service on behalf of all Calgarians. To protect the political neutrality of the police, Alberta's Police Act requires that the police chief report directly to us instead of elected officials. We provide direction to the police through the chief, police policies, monitoring the police complaint process, and approval of how the police budget is spent. Today is one of eight regular meetings we have each year to openly discuss police governance and oversight matters with the service's leadership and to hear from the public. We also have several private monthly meetings where Commissioners work more directly with the service on various matters that cannot be discussed publicly. Our commission is meeting today on the ancestral and traditional territory of the Blackfoot Confederacy, made up of the Sisiga, Bigani, Omskabina, Binagani, and Gynai First Nations. It is also home to the Iya Kanota de Wiscatabe First Nations, comprised of the Chiniki, Berespa, and Good Stony First Nations, as well as the Satina First Nation. These are the people who made a treaty with the Crown, forming Treaty VII Territory. Calgary is also homeland to the historic Northwest Metis and to the Metis Nation of Alberta. Our commission is committed to doing our part to address the inequity and intergenerational trauma caused by past and current wrongs to support reconciliation with all Indigenous people who share this land with us. Our commission also condemns racism and prejudice in all forms and is committed to being anti-racist. We stand in solidarity with all Calgarians who are Black, Indigenous, or other people of color. As we start our meeting, allow me to provide a brief overview of the format for those joining us for the first time. The public session of this meeting is being livestreamed, and a recording will be posted online so that we can make it available to those unable to attend. There will be several presentations from the Calgary Police Service, Commission members, and Commission staff. And Commission staff. Commissioners will have the chance to ask questions or make comments after each one. Once we have completed the presentations, we will move to the public participation portion of the meeting. Those who are registered to speak will then be called on by name, and will have a chance to either ask a question or make a presentation for our consideration. Following the public participation, we will close the public meeting with the chief and I taking questions from the media. Everyone is welcome to observe the media availability, but only media professionals can participate. To start our meeting, I will ask the agenda to be approved. Does any member of the commission wish to request an amendment to the agenda? Hearing none, can I please have a Commissioner move to accept the agenda? Thank you, Commissioner Tenge and Commissioner Hope. All in favor? Thank you. That is carried. I will now call for declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest from the Commissioners. Hearing no declarations, I will now ask for approval of the consent agenda. For those viewing today's meeting, the consent agenda is a list of routine items and reports that all Commissioners agree can be accepted without more discussion or a separate vote. Does any member of the commission wish to request that item on the consent agenda be brought forward for discussion? Hearing none, I declare both the agenda and consent agenda approved. The past month has been extremely busy for our commission, and I have several things that I would like to share for my first chair's report. We started the month by saying goodbye to two of our longest-serving Commissioners. Commissioners TJ Zhang and Heather Campbell both ended their terms at the end of October and will not be joining us for another term. Commissioner Zhang joined our board in 2018. During his time, he provided significant expertise in IT governance and cybersecurity. He also served on the Board of the Alberta Association of Police Governance, contributing to better police governance across our province. Commissioner Campbell joined us in 2020 and was an incredible voice for so many marginalized communities in our city. For the past three years, she also took on the added challenge of chairing our Finance and Audit Committee. On behalf of our entire commission, I would like to thank both Commissioners Zhang and Campbell for the dedication and significant contributions they made to our board. With two of our Commissioners departing, we have been working to get our new Commissioners, Commissioners Noga and Hanson, onboarded and up to speed. We are excited for the different expertise and perspectives that they will bring. In addition to our changes on our commission, November was budget season for the city of Calgary. Our commission worked hard through the month to work with council to find a way to fund multiple priorities when both the city and service are facing financial strain. I would like to thank council for finding a way to provide capital funding to build our needed training facility without requiring us to reduce service levels or stop supporting important community work through the Community Safety Investment Framework. I would also like to thank Commissioner Cornet for all the work she did overseeing the budget process as chair. This year was an exceptionally heavy budget season, and we could not have done it without you. We believe that the 2025 police budget helps strike a balance between fiscal prudence and improving public safety, and we are glad that we could work with council to strike this balance. Finally, our commission has been hard at work planning for the next year. There are big things happening in policing in the coming year with the G7 coming to our city, changes to provincial policing regulations, and the creation of a new body to take over the investigation of police complaints. Our commission is working to make sure our committee structure and focuses are aligned with the important work we have ahead so that we can continue delivering the governance that Calgarians expect of us. In closing, I want to provide our usual highlights of a few ways that members of the Calgary Police Service have delivered on the priorities of Calgarians. November has been Family Violence Prevention Month, and it is a time to reflect on an issue that affects so many people in our community. Frontline officers and members of the Domestic Conflict Unit respond to around 23,000 calls each year for domestic conflict and violence. These officers are often among the first to come into contact with these families in crisis, and we see time and time again that they approach these calls with compassion and a desire to connect the families with the community-based supports they need. This past month, we also saw the service and city respond to the Calgarians' desire to have a downtown location where collisions and crimes can be reported. A new downtown safety hub was opened with a police community counter where people can stop to speak to an officer and complete any reports. On the investigative side, $32,000 worth of drugs were seized in Cranston thanks to a lengthy investigation that also took a handgun off the street. Investigators also laid charges against a physician and sponsor for new Canadians after investigating allegations that they were using their positions of trust to sexually assault people. These investigations are often complicated and require an incredible amount of professionalism and skill. Thank you to the officers involved for pursuing justice for the victims in these cases. I also want to recognize the service's community engagement response teams, who have been working hard to address public disorder by connecting vulnerable Calgarians with the supports they need. Three of our Commissioners had the privilege of going out with these teams to see firsthand how they interact with people in crisis. These officers truly lead with compassion and do everything they can to connect people struggling with poor mental health or addiction to community agencies that can help. As we head into winter, the work of this team is going to be even more critical. I want to thank the officers who joined this initiative for the work you are doing to compassionately address and stop the crime and disorder in our public spaces. There is so much going on every day in our city where members of the service go above and beyond to protect what is important to Calgarians. On behalf of the commission, thank you. Your work in making a difference and the community is grateful for what you have done. That concludes my chair's report and brings us to our first presentation from the Calgary Police Service. One of our commission's main responsibilities under Alberta's Police Act is to work with the service each year to develop priorities and a plan for policing in Calgary. The resulting annual policing plan sets out what the service is going to achieve in the coming year and provides performance measures to assess if the goals have been achieved. For several months now, the service and our committees have been discussing priorities for 2025, and a team of very dedicated people at the service have been working hard to develop a plan that will deliver on these priorities. Today, we are very happy to have the service here to present the final 2025 Annual Policing Plan. Chief Newfeld, please go ahead and introduce your presenters.
Thank you, Chair. Just before I do that, just want to start by saying congratulations on your appointment and for your comments there leading up to the introduction to the meeting. Also want to send gratitude and appreciation to departing Commissioners Jeang and Commissioner Campbell. Obviously, we've benefited from their contributions over the years. Welcome to Commissioner Noga and Commissioner Hanson. Welcome. We're looking forward to working with you. And lots of gratitude and appreciation also to Chair Cornet for her leadership over the last couple of years. The service has really appreciated that as well. Just to get into 5.1, I'll turn it over to Deputy Toffick, and he will introduce the team.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Chair. And it's my privilege to introduce the presenters who will bring forward the 2025 Annual Policing Plan. Of course, we have the 2024 Plan, which is underway, but this gives you the preview of what we're looking at for the next year. We have Acting Director Amory Hamilton Henry of Strategic Services Section and Business Strategist Jody Jimenez, who will walk through the highlights. And we've appreciated all the feedback from commission working through committees to get to this point, so thank you.
Thank you, Deputy. The Annual Policing Plan outlines the Calgary Police Service's key priorities and initiatives for 2025, aligning with the broader goals set in the 2023-2026 Service Plan and the long-term strategic framework or strategy. This year's plan focuses on four key areas with eight outcomes, 15 goals, and 45 performance measures. These initiatives are shaped by input received from the public, the Calgary Police Commission, and provincial policing priorities alongside with CPS's commitments outlined in our 2023-2026 service plans and budget. Progress on the plan will be provided through regular reporting in 2025, ensuring accountability for the initiatives and the priorities outlined in the APP. Both the Annual Policing Plan and our progress reports will be made available on CPS's public website. I'll hand over to Jody, who will walk you through the different focus areas as well as our plan for reporting.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Calgary Police Members. As mentioned, I will begin by outlining some of the key initiatives under each of the different four focus areas that we've outlined in the Calgary 2025 Policing Plan. This is not an exhaustive list. It is just highlighting some of the main parties and some of the main activities that we will be focusing on. More details can be found within the Annual Policing Plan that you've all been provided with. To begin, I will start with our diversity. And under our diversity, some of the key initiatives that we will be focusing on in 2025 continue to be to continue our response to truth and reconciliation calls of actions and missing and murder Indigenous women and girls' call for justice. We will also focus on developing and launching the CPS Disaggregated Diversity Data Strategy as well as integrate EDIB principles into our HR processes and policies. Within our community, some of the initiatives are: Focus on violent crimes through the District Crime Reduction Strategy and identify trends and offenders across district boundaries. Reduce violent crimes through focus investigations, enforcement, and offender management relating to firearms, violence, robberies, homicides. Support the G7 Summit 2025 by establishing a dedicated team to coordinate and manage these efforts. And finally, initiate work on the development of a comprehensive service delivery model that addresses critical staffing challenges, optimizes patrol deployment, shift schedules, enhances online reporting and virtual policing capabilities, and improves customer service and call diversion strategies. Under our performance, we will continue to develop accessible formats presenting relevant crime strategy data and information to the public. We will work with the Crown on issues such as pre-charge authorization, bail reform, and information to the public, and new technologies. We will progress funded major capital construction projects such as the Belvedere Station Indoor Firearms Range. Progress the Fleet Transformation Project, fleet software management improvements, process review and management strategy, and telematics pilot. We will also implement controls and efficiencies from the overtime call at review to better align with related budget allocations. And finally, our next steps in the 2025 Annual Policing Plan is obviously we're here today presenting this to the commission, and we've gone through the subcommittees with this. We will work with the bureaus to support required reporting functions, including mid-year updates in June and fall in October. We will initiate the work to develop the 2026 APP for presentation to ELT and CPC in November 2025. And we will complete and present an annual report in February 2026, and this will report on our KPIs, including a report card summary for the 2025. Back to you, Chair. We open the floor to any questions about the 2025 Annual Policing Plan. Oh, our people, sorry. Did I miss their?
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Are there any questions? Ms. Nice and Jordan?
Just wanted to say thank you. This keeps getting better every year. It, I do like to see the institution of better KPIs. I would ask that perhaps next year, not this year, but the following, next year when we develop the new one, as you look at targets and stretch targets, because some of these KPIs are still just numbers. Don't look at outcomes, and you know, here we're talking about educational sessions. They may not be what we want to know. We want to know what happens from those educational sessions. And so that whole idea of developing better KPIs, targets, and stretch targets needs to continue. But thanks for the work on this. It gets better all the time. Thank you.
And my apologies, I missed our people, so I'll just quickly go through that. My apologies, I skipped it. Under our people, we will create and sustain awareness of the safety disclosure office and intake process, redesign high-party HR processes requiring modernization and automation, select and initiate implementation of a sworn applicant tracking system, incorporate anti-racism support within peer support and psychological services, implement and integrate the leadership competency framework in the employee lifecycle, and finally, incorporate a focus on retention with regards to members in the early stages of their career. My apologies for that.
No problem. Thank you for adding that. Are there any other questions? Ms. Mallon?
Thank you, Chair. Taking off on what Commissioner Nice and Jordan said on the people's side, we do a lot of work on respectful workplace and all of these activities to try and build a respectful workplace. Is there any chance in the future again of looking at a KPI that will ask us to improve on the employee survey, the perception of people, that it's worthwhile to report? Because that is one thing that there's still a high amount of people saying it's not worth it. And I'm just wondering if somehow we could get focused on that particular thing, because we can have all the services in the world. If people don't want to access them for whatever their reason is, then we're not going to succeed. So that is just what I was wondering, if we could go to the core of people need to report so that we can do all the things that we want to do.
Thank you, Commissioner. One KPI we have inserted following our conversation with the CPC subcommittees was the percentage of employees who agree they experience inappropriate conduct but do not report it. So that's one way we will start tracking that this year and reporting on it.
Commissioner Wong?
Thank you, Chair. Just want to test your thoughts for a moment here. And it's under the diversity one. Progressive culture of accessibility, inclusion, and belonging. In the goal statement, and it's the word "culture", where it says integrate equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging principles and practices into the workplace culture and service delivery. The word "culture", if that word were to be moved around to say principal practices and culture into the workplace, how significant is that? So in other words, you're adopting EDBI culture into the workplace as opposed to EDBI into workplace culture?
I would say that I suspect that it could be impactful in changing the overall approach by approaching it from the principles, the practices, and impacting our culture broadly. But I will defer to the CPO who leads this area, as I'm not an expert in this area of work.
If I understood you correctly, Commissioner, you were saying your suggestion is integrate equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging culture? Because I've got the exact line here. Where did you want to move the word "culture" to?
It's a philosophical thing, where you say principal practices and culture into the workplace. So in other words, you're embracing as a culture into the workplace as opposed to embracing just the principal practices embedded into workplace culture.
Okay, so I think the intention here is this. CPS has a workplace culture right now, and we could debate or discuss that culture. But the idea is, right now, we have a workplace culture. The goal with this exact statement is that we will continue to embed principles of equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging into our current culture, so the culture shapes and evolves over time. And directionally, it is evolving into an ever-more-inclusive culture.
Yeah, I understand. I understand the nuances both ways. I'm just wondering if there's a change. If you adopt as a culture into your workplace, there's a different philosophy than in adopting principles into workplace culture. And I'm not sure yourself or the chief can respond to that. Thank you. I'm not going to believe it, just.
No, no, I appreciate it. I think it's a good question. When you said it, like, I've been kind of thinking about, like, that's fairly deep. It would be good to have a deeper conversation, like, because I do agree with the CPO that the organization has a culture, and there's more to it than just EDIB, right? EDIB is integrated and increased within the existing culture, right? Like, and you talk about other things that are impacting the culture, resourcing issues, changes in technology, AI, all the things, right? So there's more things there as well. So I don't know if you're, and this may not be what you're saying, Commissioner, but I don't know that you can just substitute a culture and then say we're going to put in an EDIB culture. Do you know what I mean? And I might be missing it, but I just think it probably bears a little bit more discussion about what it means. And I think it is nuanced, but I think that's probably why a bit more discussion might be useful.
Are there any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hamilton Henry and Ms. Jimenez, for that presentation and for all the work that went into the 2025 Annual Policing Plan. We know that it's a massive undertaking, and we appreciate every member of the team who worked on the document this year. The next presentation on our agenda is a presentation on the security planning for the G7 Conference that is coming to Calgary in June. While our commission does not have a role in the operational planning for this event, we have a responsibility to ensure that the service has the planning and resources in place to provide policing support to the event and maintain policing services across Calgary. Thank you for being here today. Please go ahead with your presentation.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. I get the pleasure of introducing Superintendent Joe Brar and the team, who are going to come in and do a quick presentation on the G7 Summit. As you know, it's a major policing event, and by virtue of the the Calgary Police Commission guidelines, there is a requirement for the Calgary Police Service to present that openly. And this is the second of five updates that we will provide between now and June, when the summit will occur. So with that, I'm going to have Superintendent Brar go up there, and you have the materials in front of you, and Joe might just cover that quickly and then open the questions.
Thank you, Deputy. Thank you, Commission, for allowing us the opportunity to come and present on the G7 Summit. So this will be the second of five updates you'll receive throughout the course of the event, including the After Action Report, which will follow in September of 2025. So building on the presentation that you received in September, just coming forward to declare this event. But Chief Newfeld has declared this event as a major policing event officially, and as per CPS policy, we are here to present on the G7 Summit. As mentioned, Chief Newfeld has identified the 2025 G7 Summit as a major policing event, and rightfully so. As you may be aware, the G7 Summit is yearly. It's the largest global security event. And in 2025, it'll be taking place in Canadaskis, Alberta, for the second time in the history of the event. Why this matters is the CPC, as your LC states, based on inquiries such as the Morden Report in relation to the 2010 G20 Summit in Toronto, the Emergencies Act inquiry just a couple of years ago. CPC needs to ensure that the service has a necessary policy in place and can properly fulfill its regular policing responsibilities to the city of Calgary while policing the G7 Summit, and that we have the resources and the means needed to be able to police the event. CPC can support the Calgary Police Service if the need arises by providing feedback and recommendations, providing advocacy and support with other government agencies, and mitigating various pressures on the CPS. As mentioned, Canada will be hosting the 2025 G7 Summit in Canadaskis. And this event will bring a national lens to the city of Calgary and Canadaskis. It'll be highlighted Calgary on a global map. We are working with Tourism Calgary as well to see how they're going to leverage this event to promote the city of Calgary for future events. One of the challenges with events of this type is there's a huge security threat, and there's also the potential for demonstrations. And like I said before, it puts Calgary on a national stage, so there is the risk of reputational damage for the Calgary Police Service and for the city of Calgary. So we want to ensure that this event goes smoothly. And I'm happy to say that, based on our initial planning and assessments, we believe that the Calgary Police Service has the resources and the skill set within the service to provide effective and efficient policing services to Calgarians while policing the event itself. In preparing for the event, the team, the planning team has conducted extensive benchmarking to acknowledge lessons learned from previous events and to build upon those to ensure that same mistakes are the gaps, same gaps aren't seen during the 2025 event. So as mentioned, Canadaskis last held the event in 2002. And most recently, in 2018, the event was held in Charlevaux, Quebec. We've spoken with Montreal Police Service, who held the COP15 Summit in 2022. And the Quebec City Police Service, who's helped to police the event in 2018 to determine some of their lessons learned and we're building our planning around that. As you can imagine, an event of this magnitude will have extraordinary and incremental costs associated. These costs will be covered by Safety Canada through the major international event security funding framework. We are currently working with Safety Canada, our security partners and other city of Calgary business units to assess what our needs will be for the summit. And then we'll bring a request forward to Public Safety Canada to fund those expenses. The RCMP has been designated as the primary agency responsible for safety and security of the G7 Summit. And such, they have asked for the Calgary Police Service to assist them in these needs. That being said, it's remember that the Calgary Police Service remains the police jurisdiction for the city of Calgary and we will be the primary agency responsible for all safety and security of the city. And our goal is to minimize disruptions to the daily lives of Calgarians while successfully hosting the G7 Summit. For the next steps, we're finalizing our staffing, equipment and resource needs, developing operational plans, staffing assignments. We will be requesting mutual aid from other law enforcement agencies and partners from across the country. This will result in MOUs being drafted and we'll be looking to backfill members that are assigned for the event security. So all this information plus more was included in the written report that was was a part of this package. If there's any questions, I can take those now.
Thank you, Superintendent Brar. Questions from the Commission, please. Ms. Artengay.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm curious if if there'll be any reaching out to Montreal and the people involved in the NATO Annual Conference and the security there, considering obviously what's happening there and knowing protests maybe since COVID have looked very different than prior. So I'm just curious about that and if maybe budgets might change considering the outcome of that.
Great question. So we are in contact with the organizers for the COP15 event. We're the same people that would have been involved in the most recent demonstrations related to NATO event. We have not followed up with them since last weekend's events, but that is a part of the plan. We did follow up with them around COP15, the planning for that, and also with Quebec City, like you mentioned, Charlevaux. Quebec was where the G7 Summit was held, but Quebec City was the interventionary for most of the delegates. And if you remember back in 2001, they had the Summit of Americas, which resulted in a very violent demonstration. So lessons learned there as well. And you're right, the budget that we're preparing for this when it comes to demonstrations and protests is we're hoping that all demonstrations are lawful, safe, peaceful and minimize community disruptions. But at the same time, we're prepared to deal with violent riots and all the things that come. So we're preparing for both extremes.
Thank you, Commissioner Dideron.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm just curious, what is the specific ask from the Commission? I haven't seen, I don't know if there is a specific list of what you need directly from the Commission at this point or you don't have them yet?
At this point, that's a great question, and I think that's the biggest role of the Commission and that's why we're here. I can, I'm pleased to announce at this point that there is no requirement for assistance from the CPC. Like the Calgary Police Service, there's lots of lessons learned for other agencies as well. And one of the lessons learned is working in cooperation with the police jurisdiction and the national partners as well to make sure that we're planning these things hand in hand. As such, we've set up a command structure that mirrors the RCMP structure to ensure that the Calgary Police Service and city of Calgary interests are met at the same time. But if there are any requests through the regular updates that we provide now until September, we'll bring forward those asks and if needed, we'll bring bring them forward sooner.
Mr. Nice and Jordan.
Thank you for the, thank you for the presentation. Can you, and this may not, maybe too early to kind of address this, but given that G7 is middle of June, early June, and then we head into Stampede, those are, you know, essentially another major event for CPS. Is there a thought into what programs you might have to step down a little bit for the public? And what information are we going to give the public related to that? Because, you know, we put all these police officers on, you know, basically you can't have vacation during this timeframe. And so there are implications to the service. How does that affect the public side of it from a Calgarian perspective?
Great question, and I think, Commissioner, just for your awareness, we, right after the G7 Summit, will have the Rotary Club Conference as well, which will bring about 25,000 people to the city of Calgary, another big lift. At this point, we do not anticipate any interruptions to our regularly scheduled events in the city. But we are mindful of police officer burnout and city partners as well. As such, when we go through our planning, we will be having a a contingent of Calgary Police Service officers and officers from other jurisdictions to support us. So we don't experience that burnout because, as you're aware, lots of events starting in May and going all the way until October.
Commissioner Ogil.
Thanks for the presentation, Superintendent. Will we see a budget in February?
There will be a budget. And if that's something you wish to see, I think we can bring that forward.
Well, I'm concerned, a bit concerned about, you know, not without trying to get down in the weeds of how you run your business. Like, the contingency required here could be huge because of the comments from Commissioner Tenge and what we saw in Montreal last week. And I, I just want to be clear that we're not trying to answer questions about the money first. And second, I'd like to know about the how solid the agreement is with Public Service Canada or whoever it is that that to reimburse the city of Calgary Police for the cost of this, if it gets to be a runaway. Because which it could, which could happen.
No, and we're very mindful of that. So when it comes to the budget planning process, there's an up to amount. So that up to amount would include contingency for massive demonstrations, mass arrests and things along those lines and extraordinary expenses. So the planning team, based on what we've seen, based on intelligence, have together a budget that we believe that would cover all that. And at this point, there has been no setback from our partners over at Public Safety Canada.
Just add quickly, Commissioner Ogil. As Superintendent Brar mentioned there, that'll be funded through that framework, through major events through the federal government. So in terms of the MOU and stuff like that, we have had partnerships like this before. So I would say the risk in relation to, you know, how solid is it is very low. We'd not thought about, I think that's the reason for the pause about bringing the budget, because it's not a budget that is likely to impact the city budget. So the governance of that would go to the governance team. And then also, there's generally an audit done after, a separate audit done through Public Safety Canada that happens independently. So I think we could bring that certainly, as as Joe referenced, I think we could bring it for information. But it's something that's actually administered and governed separately from us and the Commission other than our submission. So it's a bit of a different animal than the regular budget.
Mr. Wong.
Thank you, Chair. Recognizing next, next June is the event, recognizing that there's a number of things happening in the in the global political environment, namely inauguration of the US President and then recognizing that there's probably been challenges there. One of the things that that we've had a conversation with our city administration about is the recognition that municipal plaza has always been used as a public protest place. However, next year, we're going to, you know, cordon off Olympic Plaza, Arts, Arts Common Transformation. And the question then becomes, would that still be a suitable place for protesting? Or would you, you know, would it be a designated place other than that? I'm not sure if you can answer that question.
So what you're referring to is the designated demonstration zones. So we are working with the city of Calgary partners and we're aware of the renovations to Olympic Plaza. And at this point, we've had some preliminary conversations about what would be appropriate venues for demonstrations. Again, be mindful of the fact that people that are demonstrating want to and need to be heard and seen. And at the same time, we need to do it in a way that minimizes disruptions to Calgarians. So all those things will be taken into consideration, but that is on top of mind that there will be some limitations to areas that were previously used.
Yeah, recognizing, of course, the corridor around that is our LRT stations, which we don't, you know, want to see blockage. Thank you.
Commissioner Cornet has a question online.
Hi, yes, thanks. It's a little bit along the line of Commissioner Nice and Jordan's, but we've had a couple of years where the summer vacations for many officers have been put on hold because of events and and things like this. And I'm WPC most recently. And I guess I'm just wondering if they're in your budgeting for people. Is is there a sense that you're going to continue to try and provide vacation time for Calgary Police Services? With all the other things coming on, whether it would be Rotary or Stampede? Just how is that being managed? And are you increasing the people that you're asking to get support from other jurisdictions to come into Calgary to maybe augment that? I'm just curious what the sentiment is around this. And and it's a longer term one for the health and wellness of the the officers and the service overall. Because it just, it it does wear year after year.
Thank you for that. As I mentioned earlier, the health and wellbeing of our employees is is top of mind for us. And when we get into the finer detail or the mature, the planning matures, we'll have an exact number, sorry, a better idea of how many police officers we need for G7. And then we'll also take into consideration the Rotary Conference, Stampede, other festivals, the increased demand for P duties. And, you know, the summer is the time of the year that most of our officers want to take time off. So all those things will be taken into consideration. The good thing here is the the funding framework does allow for mutual aid in recognition of things like this.
Thanks.
I had one question. Can you, and I apologize if I missed this. When do your plans have to be finalized and turned in?
There's several different ones, but I think our tabletop exercise is planned for May.
Okay, so May. And then when will you know if you've been approved for all the resources and the budget that you're asking for?
That's a so as the Calgary Police Service, we know what G7 is going to bring to the city as far as demonstrations and things along those lines, increased traffic to the airport, increased traffic within the city. So those are things that we will, those are the things that we're going to prioritize as our main responsibility. And they'll be asked by the RCMP as well, and those will be a priority for us as well. And we'll only be able to deliver what supports we have the funding and the resources for when they ask us from the RCMP. So we anticipate whatever is being asked of us will be provided the resourcing for.
So you don't have a, you won't have an exact date that they will actually give you an approval or a stamp to go. Here you go.
Our goal is to have the contribution agreement, which is the funding portion, signed off by the end of this year.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you. And then my last question is around, you know, from what we've seen, you know, for example, in Montreal and other locations, what proactive community outreach are you doing? So that the the community is aware that this is coming and then, you know, things like they won't be able to protest where they have previously, et cetera.
Good question. And in February, as you're aware, the Calgary Police Service will come forward with our updated Code 1000 policy, which is our policy that speaks to mass demonstrations and events of such. Since the beginning of COVID until now, the nature of demonstrations has changed. And so has the Calgary Police Service's response. And a big part of that response is proactive work by engaging our diversity unit and our police liaison officers to gain voluntary compliance. And it's an approach of trying to understand why the individuals are demonstrating and how we can support them. And ensuring that whatever event is lawful, peaceful, safe and minimizes community disruptions. So we'll continue down that same path. I think that we've had lots of success here over the past few years using that approach. So we'll continue down that same path. So it'll be the same approach that we've used for other demonstrations. And of course, we'll have more intelligence because this is a global event and that'll help inform our plans as well.
Thanks, Superintendent. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For the next agenda item, we'll be receiving an update on the service's ongoing anti-racism work. Please go ahead with that presentation.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to all the Commissioners here today. It's nice to meet everybody and see those I've worked with in the past and and welcome to the the new Commission members. I always wanted to first say thank you to Deputy McCollan and her team. I'm coming into a bureau that's done incredibly complex work over the last number of years in a very diverse and increasingly diverse community. So I want to say thank you for the foundational work that that I've inherited. And I look forward to the opportunity of working with Commission, my new bureau and across the organization on our commitments around anti-racism moving forward. So I know that the report during a period of transition that came to you for the pre-read is a bit shorter than what you're usually reading. So I'm not going to belabor those points and go over it. So I'll definitely take questions on that with the help of my colleagues here today. But I'll just bring to light a couple other highlights from the Bureau. And so I just want to recognize the the crucial work of the Bureau, but also look forward to, and I'm hearing it in the room, and I know I've spoken to Deputy McCollin too on results. And so these programs are new within CPS, so I completely understand we're looking for the efficacy of these programs. Or we can enhance and involve these programs moving forward in 2025 and 2026. I believe we're back here on January 9th under the new format. And so we look forward to bringing you a new, a new report with a lot of the information there around the results of the programs of the last year. We have an anti-racism Iraq, external Iraq Town Hall we're hosting tomorrow night. It's the, I believe, the first annual event of such a kind. And so we have numerous units within the Calgary Police Service that have met with the External Board over the last year in 2024. And so they'll be meeting and presenting on the feedback they heard and what we've done to enhance those areas and those services and maybe where we have not and why, and what we continue to work on in 2025. Part of that will also be bringing in units that the External Advisory Board has looked to want to meet with and have presentations on in 2025. So representatives from the organization's units will be coming in to listen and hear what those consultations look like in 2024 and what they should expect and how they work appropriately with the Advisory Board moving forward. Also wanted to highlight, and I believe Commissioner Tenge, you were a speaker at it, but the incredible success of the PAC Conference in late October. So we've received incredible feedback around the conference we're already planning for next year. And we hope that it's even a bigger success moving forward in there. Also like to highlight, Action Table has just hit 100 referrals and has and has 52 active files within it now. So it's an incredible success. Feedback from partners in Toronto, which this was modeled after. It's far exceeded their expectations to where we'd be at the stage of the program. And then I think I'd just open it to one more, actually. I know those questions around, we've gone through another period of transition, not just in the leadership within the Bureau with in hate crimes. So we've just secured our next hate crime coordinator focusing on community engagement. Constable Dennis Hoggie will be focused on community outreach and education. And we've posting, we're posting our next hate crimes investigator position to enhance the program. I think I'd just open it to the questions from there.
Thank you so much, Deputy Chief. Are there questions from the Commission? Seeing that, I actually have a question. So I agree with you, your predecessor did an incredible job in this role. Seeing that, um, I actually have a question. So um, I agree with you, your predecessor did an incredible job in this role in very difficult times as well as her team. So um, you don't have to answer this question today because I know you're new. Um, but maybe in the next report, you could explain how you plan to sort of transition into the role with your team and the outreach that you will be doing so that the community gets to know you better and gets to know your team better. I think that I would love to see that, and I think some of the other commissioners would like to see that work as well.
Already pressed my button. Let's leave that on. Uh, I can, I can definitely answer that. I'm, I'm too looking forward to the plan. I know I've met with uh Director Nun and his team already about what that looks like and what the next hundred days of the new leadership team within the bureau looks like. Uh, we just, we're just onboarding our new inspector um in the Travis Jessica within there. So we've had some change at the inspector level as well. So this week and next week are the first the team has actually been together. So I know we have plans to meet through December on that exact strategy of what that looks like for us to understand the bureau and where we can be impactful in in our efforts out in the community and kind of what are strategies around that. So I look forward to bring that back, I think, on January nine.
Fantastic. And then can you just clarify that hate crimes um position that you mentioned? So you have two people in hate crimes now? So Matt, Constable Messenger and, or, no, okay.
Yep. Yep, sorry. Yeah, Constable Messenger's moved on from the program.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so there's still only someone is replacing him then?
Yeah, we just hired that, we were hiring that replacement right now. We're posting for that replacement right now.
Okay, so, thank you. Commissioner, I did around.
Yeah, I just have a question for my own understanding. Is uh is hate crime, so is that something that uh is uh of this level? How did that work out?
So if I think if I understand a question, I might need to seek a little bit of help from a chief. But yeah, we need, we need a federal approval to lay the hate crime charge. Um, we can lay with a hate motivated crime, uh, but to actually lay the hate crime charge, we'd need federal oversight uh and approval to play the charge.
And then how does that process works? Like if you have an officer here that is investigating that, what are the chances of be able to get uh any kind of uh prosecution done in that kind of situation?
Yeah, it's a specialized prosecutions uh advisor or team that would, we would take our case to to seek that approval. And then they'd run that through the federal uh, the PPSC. All right, thank you. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you for the report and the ongoing work you're doing, and I look forward to hearing more in January.
Thank you, Chair.
The next items on our agenda are two reports on crime trends. The first report covers what the investigative areas of the service are seeing. And the second report covers what frontline officers are seeing. Commissioners will get a chance to ask questions about both reports together after the verbal presentations. Please go ahead.
Before I turn it over to Katie, I think we have a third report that we added on just for your um uh information, and I think it was in result or as a result of discussions last time in relation to bear spray. So Deputy McClellan will speak about the Bureau of Investigative Support, then Deputy Gill will carry on. And then DC Toffick and Rebecca Davidson will talk about that bear spray issue that had come up last time. So we'll do all of those and then go to questions after, if you're okay.
Yeah, thanks, Chief. Uh, good evening, uh, Commissioners, good afternoon. Uh, welcome to the new, uh, to the new Commissioners. Uh, I wasn't here uh in October when I officially switched over, and so I know Deputy Toffick stepped in for me briefly. But uh, like Deputy Daly, I just want to thank Deputy Daly for all the work that he did in this bureau, as well as retired Deputy uh Chief Paul Cook, who did an incredible job in in both of the divisions within this bureau. So um, I know you have a report in front of you with lots of information. I do have under five minutes of speaking notes to share with you, uh, just to add some additional context and some additional information. So uh, please bear with me while, while, while I go through this. As you can imagine, there are successes in this area every single day. Uh, I'm not able to share all of them, but just the incredible work that is done by many, many members has just been absolutely overwhelming. Uh, the Chair did mention in her, her opening remarks about Family Violence Prevention Month, so I won't repeat what she has said other than just add a couple of different additional context pieces. Uh, although addressing domestic violence is a year round priority, Family Violence Prevention Work Month plays a crucial role in raising public awareness about the complexity of domestic violence. We have been sharing information on social media throughout the month, including providing information about supports and resources and helping individuals recognize the red flags of unhealthy relationships. Of particular note, this message was shared on social media in twelve of the most commonly spoken languages in Calgary. Since our last update, there have been several brazen and concerning shootings in our city, some tied to organized crime and some motivated by other things such as drug trafficking, road rage and personal disputes. So far, uh, this year as of yesterday, uh, we've seen sixty nine shootings, which is a twenty six percent drop from the same period in twenty twenty three. Of these forty two were targeted and seventeen have been linked to organized crime. Since our last update, our homicide unit has added one more suspicious death investigation, you would have seen that in the media, which occurred last week in the community of Pine Creek in southwest Calgary. At this time, the death remains undetermined and we are continuing to speak with witnesses and collecting evidence to determine if, in fact, the death was criminal in nature. So far this year, there have been fifteen confirmed homicides with eight cases cleared so far. The investigations into this year's unsolved homicide remain active and ongoing, with the majority being the result of fatal shootings. Of note, last week, one man was sentenced sentenced in relation to the two thousand and fourteen homicide of Mr. Colton Croshue. This was a significant investigation for our service which spanned eight years. Throughout this investigation, our members showed incredible persistence and dedication to find an answers and closure for Mr. Colton uh Croshue's family. The disappearance of Colton Croshue was the initial case that led to our transformation of missing person investigations, which has resulted in an updated policy, clear guidelines and more dedicated resources for missing persons in Calgary, including the hiring of an indigenous community navigator. In the report, you have seen we've noted several cybercrime trades, cybercrime trends that we continue to track, including a concerning increase in reported ransom ransomware incidents. Cybercrime, including ransomware attacks impacting businesses, is a crime category that is generally underreported to police. Because of this, we continue to work with our partner agencies and victims in Calgary to encourage the reporting of these types of offenses. Many of you know the cyber summit that we held not too long ago and the great participation that we had there. As well, our cyber forensic unit involved in many public and private initiatives aim at uh bridging this gap, including the Alberta Critical Infrastructure Working Group and Cyber Alberta. We also, through our participation in national cybercrime coordination, uh, our investigators are able to act on intelligence and proactively reach out to ransomware victims who may not even be aware that they have had had a breach. In addition, we're also tracking extortion trends, which spiked in twenty twenty three. So far this year, we have recorded a hundred and twenty seven reports compared to two hundred and twenty three in all of twenty twenty three. Although we've seen a decrease this year, this is still a concerning method of victimization that has permanent and lasting impacts on victims. In these incidents, victims tend to be males between the ages of thirteen to twenty five. Last month, sharing this message was a main theme of our cybersecurity awareness month and child abuse prevention month messaging. Uh, the Chair also talked to the individual, the physician who was charged uh with multiple offenses, so I won't say repeat what she has shared. Our Sexual Assault Investigative Unit also recently issued warrants for a man who sexually assaulted a woman downtown earlier this month. You would have also seen that in the media. In this case, the victim and the accused were unknown to each other prior to the attack. Thankfully, a bystander witnessed the assault and approached a transit peace officer who called police. After significant investigation and coordination with our patrol members, we have identified the suspect and issued warrants. The victim has since been connected with supports. Also, on the topic of sexual assault, we've been working with our Public Affairs Media Relations Unit to launch an advertising campaign to educate and remind Calgarians on informed consent. Based on stats collected by the Sexual Assault Investigative Unit that showed a majority of sexual assaults in Calgary earlier this year involved the use of alcohol, this came, this campaign will specifically target bars and restaurants across the city over the holiday party season. You may begin to see some of these ads and posters in the next coming week. And finally, our arson team is investigating after a resident in Hillhurst was intentionally set on fire in mid November. As investigators spoke to witnesses, several nearby residents came forward to report that they had also received threatening letters asking for Bitcoin transfers that were left on the front steps of their homes. Several similar incidents are believed to have occurred in Edmonton through September and October. And our arson investigators are exploring any possible connections between these incidents and the Calgary incident. Luckily, this incident only resulted in property damage and no physical injuries. However, this had the potential to end significantly worse. As I begun to settle into this bureau, I can say, as I said at the beginning, firsthand how incredibly skilled and proficient our investigators in the bureau are. Over the past two months, I've been absolutely amazed at all the levels of investigative excellence and commitment to pursuing justice for all victims in Calgary. All of these efforts directly impact Calgarians' trust and confidence in our service. As we plan for the twenty twenty, as we plan for twenty twenty five, our bureau looks forward to engaging proactively with the community to continuing education, informing and addressing crime and victimization that impacts them the most. Thank you for your attention and your continued support.
Uh, so next comes to me and I'll take off to the Bureau of Community Placing. So you'll know uh last month that uh Ms. Rebecca Davidson was here and presented the Community Safety Dashboard. Um, and uh, that is now live, so you'll have noticed. And and by the way, if you have questions, Ms. Davidson's here, if you have further questions on that. Um, uh, so you'll notice that the Bureau of Community Placing Report is modified and changed from what we presented before uh to avoid redundancy. Uh, what you have before you is a three page report that speaks to several operational files and initiatives that are ongoing, including work by our CERT teams, uh, the statistics for the Navigation Center, uh, the traffic safety initiatives for the month and some statistics in and around uh traffic safety. I will highlight a couple of uh points at uh uh the work that's been done by the members of the Calgary Police Service. Uh, we had a series of commercial robberies in October and several high prolific offenders uh were um, uh, were responsible, two have been um, uh, two have been arrested and two are outstanding. So that's addressing the series of uh robberies that are um, that we've uh been seeing in terms of higher stats in the month of October. Social disorder is up a little bit as well for the month of October. Um, trending a little higher than twenty twenty three, but within the five year average. Uh, we believe the two main drivers is the weather has been a little bit warmer up until about the last week or so. Um, and the main drivers are unwanted guests, uh, and those are the calls for service and disturbances is the other one. Uh, additionally, over the last uh month or so, our district community resource officers have been working directly with business owners and communities in the downtown and in the Beltline to reinforce the need to report crime when it's occurring. When the public is engaged to create awareness about on disorderly behavior that necessitates a police response. Throughout August and September, we had a number of cannabis and liquor store and convenience store robberies. And uh, through investigation, we were able to identify a suspect um, while he was committing another convenience store robbery uh, subject to or subsequent to that arrest and additional investigative work. These, this individual is charged with twenty two additional uh criminal charges resulting um, or connecting him to the robberies that occurred earlier this year. Of those twenty two charges, seventeen were seventeen were weapons related, four charges were failed to comply with the release order and six counts for robbery. He currently remains in custody. And finally, you'll have seen about three weeks ago, uh, almost four weeks ago, we have uh, opened up our new front counter downtown, uh, two blocks away from the previous counter on Stephen Avenue. Uh, this counter allows for the public to enter. Previously, it was only as a rest spot for uh the Calgary Police Service and our partners in bylaw and transit. Uh, this one allows public to come in to report uh certain crimes and car accidents and also speak to a police officer if they require assistance or guidance. Uh, so we're um, we'll monitor our stats in terms of how that front counter is going, but um I anticipate to be nothing short of a success. So with that, I'll uh flip it over to Deputy Toffick to talk about the bear, the bear spray report you have.
Thanks very much and thanks, Commission. Uh, this report is arising from a motion that the Commission made asking for information to be brought back uh about the strategies we're using to address the availability of bear spray for assaults and robberies. So I won't rehash the entire report uh because it gets into some of the statistics around what we see as far as offenses using uh sprays as the most serious violation and then also uh, the frequency of seizures or how much we were seizing in relation to that. The bottom line, uh, we have done preventative efforts in the past around the containers and initially it was making sure the containers where people could dispose of bear spray and other sprays was was secure so that people couldn't access it uh and take that. And they were located at a number of locations in Calgary and that served effective. That was in twenty nineteen. Uh, what we're doing more recently through the joint management team where we have superintendents in Deputy Gill's Bureau uh, who sit on that joint management team, working with our city partners to look at the bylaws, specifically the public behavior bylaw around Pete, when people are carrying bear spray, if there's no reasonable reason for them to be carrying it in the environment, there may be an opportunity to take some action there. So that's the efforts happening currently, working with city and city legal on that, uh, which would give us a bit more power because right now, uh, if a person's carrying a spray, they could just say, I'm going hiking and that's kind of, kind of it. And there's not, not much we can do unless a criminal offense or something else happens there and it's very reactive. So trying to be more proactive in that space uh and working with the city to address that. I'll stop there for questions.
Thank you all for your reports. Uh, Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Hope.
Thank you to service. And this is actually just a question for Deputy um, uh, sorry, I lost it. Nope, not, not Gil. Yeah. One of you. My mind's gone, sorry. It was around the the sexual assault investigation messaging. Uh, Katie, wow. Um, it was, it was in relation to certainly the, there was the services designing a, a messaging to go out and to coordinate. I was just wondering around the use of of sort of partnerships in that messaging and and sort of the joining with sort of the commercial premises or, and I know it's not necessarily a new idea, but it's, it's hoping to to take the burden of the service to be always sort of the lead in the charge and certainly harboring some of the majority of the costs for that messaging to go out on a citywide basis. And so, yeah, it's just really around how we partner to get that messaging out because it's also about um, um, being recognized as a sensitive matter. And it also, it needs a longevity that not always the service can focus on because there are overlapping issues.
Yeah, thank, thanks very much for your question and absolutely sensitive, sensitive matters and very, very impact impactful to the victims who are involved. So uh, we're involved with many, many partnerships. We're embedded um with numerous people, additional um folks throughout the city. Uh, in the younger groups, we've got our school resource officers who are in the schools. Uh, we've got youth link, we've got programs through the youth foundation in addition to more formal partnerships, and I don't know all the names of them. I don't know if Deputy Daly can help me or the chief or someone, but uh, we are at the table with many additional partners. We're involved also with post secondary institutions. As I said, some of the traditional uh media that that we're sharing, and you would have heard at the end of my presentation, particularly just coming from my last bureau, um, my desire and um, uh, knowing the impacts that we have when we're actually with the community. So going out into the community uh in twenty twenty five is one of our goals to ensure that we are having folks come, uh, actually talk to us, uh, speak to us offline if they wish. Um, but just getting as much education out as we can, particularly with the younger ones. And then the older ones through traditional media, as I said, post secondary, many, many businesses through Deputy Gill's area with some of his frontline officers, our community resource officers and as much folks as we can, as you alluded to, we can't do it all by ourselves.
One thing maybe to add quickly, Commissioner Hope, too. I think sometimes people look to the police service because, as we heard at the CPC Summit, very much a trusted voice that people look to more um messaging to come from because, of course, our officers are out there. We have pretty good visibility looking in and assessing or analyzing the reported crime. The other thing is massive um, social media uh footprint. So we have the ability to get it out in many ways, even more than a lot of our partners do. So that collaboration is super important, but that that means to get to people is one that we, we probably are unparalleled with.
Commissioner Nice and Jordan.
Thank you. Thanks for all three reports, especially the bear spray because that does lend uh significant information to what we got last month. So thank you for doing that. I have three questions. They're all relatively quick and I don't need answers, but specifically, but on page five, again, this is the second time we've alluded to the toxicology reports and the length of time that they are outstanding. So again, they're greater than one year. that they are outstanding. So again, they're greater than one year and I understand that it comes from the RCMP lab and that we're at their mercy. I'm just wondering if there is some way that we can help to advocate or have you looked at other providers for that analysis to try and move some of these charges, complaints, other things along? So if you could address the toxicology reports. And then the second question relates to, um, the fatalities. So both the railway collisions and the, the C train fatalities that have occurred in the last month seem to be spiking and I'm wondering if there has been discussion with both the railway police or that body in terms of what the impact they can do to try and mitigate that and the C train with our own, um, uh, city of Calgary infrastructure or services that might be able to mitigate that. They're both concerning from my perspective.
I can probably speak to those two very quickly, Commissioner. So in relation to, you know, what's potentially an advocacy opportunity, and it may well be, that would be probably toward the Office of Chief Medical Examiner. And we often see in cases like this where there's, um, collision investigations, where we're looking at toxicology and also investigations where there's officer-involved shootings or incidents like that where somebody dies in police custody, unfortunately. Those are oftentimes setback because of waiting for toxicology reports. So I do think that's potentially an advocacy, uh, opportunity there as well. Um, and so one we could take offline to talk about sort of how that works and where that may be directed. And then the other one was around, um, the, uh, is there opportunities to sort of change the physical environment or whatever to prevent some of those deaths? So we do definitely look at that with our partners from transit and engineers, the city, every time there is one of those deaths. One of the challenges that I know our investigators and the city run into collectively is the fact that we have so much LRT track that runs above ground. So if somebody's motivated to, um, use that as a mode for self-harm, it's, it's really not that hard to do. But they do look at, uh, areas where there's clusters or sort of hot, I'll call them hotspots where there is, um, uh, collisions with individuals and trains and do look for opportunities for that. But it is somewhat limited because it's easy to displace because you don't have to go far where you could access it elsewhere if that was your, your plan.
Yeah, I guess just a follow-up, uh, would be that it's fine to look at it, but we can't continue to see the spike. So there has to be some sort of strategy. So it would be nice to have, have that, um, move forward a little bit because that's a big number. And I know it's above ground. I know there's lots of motivation out there and we have lots of mental health issues, but it is still something we have to pay attention to. Thanks.
Maybe what we could do is commit to just bringing back a report or send something just about the work that has been done and the success we have seen because there has been some. But like I say, it's a bit of a challenging issue for sure, but we can probably add a bit more color.
Mr. Mallon.
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions. First for Deputy McClellan. Um, related to, um, specifically District Five at committee, there was a discussion about the, um, rising domestic violence situation there. And one of the suggestions was is that there used to be a collective that operated in that area of all the agencies that supported that kind of activity and that it had kind of fallen off. And there was a suggestion that it was needed and that perhaps the police would have to chair it because there was nobody else emerging as a natural leader in that space. So is that going to be reconstituted for District Five?
Good question. I don't know, actually. Uh, Deputy Gill, do you? No, I, we can get back to you unless, uh, somebody else. So we had the domestic conflict, um, that they're still there. Yeah, DCRTs. Um, so I'm not sure, Commissioner, I'll have to go back and look to see what the question was the last time. Um, because I know we still have those officers there and they still are doing that coordination. Some of the increases are, are obviously due to, um, our enhanced social media and our enhanced education and information, but also because there's an increase of population. And, and I think that's why we're seeing some of those numbers increase as well.
Well, there were two suggestions. One was the potential of a dedicated, um, uh, what do we call them?
Yeah, domestic.
You know, um,
resource individual.
Yeah, per, you know, what are, what are the names of those, those?
Oh, so you were talking about the community mobilizers.
Yeah, that, that was one suggestion, a dedicated, uh, community mobilizer. And the second was that this collective had been very effective in the past.
Yes.
Almost like a domestic violence table, I guess, action table that you could work together. So that, that would be helpful if that is
Thank you.
able to, uh, be reconstituted.
No, I do remember when we talked about that at our subcommittee, uh, um, conversation. And so as you might recall, the chief in fact said that yes, we would endorse. We had five community mobilizers. One was just a limited term.
Right.
He in fact gave the direction that we would, um, fulfill that to a full-time equivalent.
Right.
So we are in the process of doing that.
Right.
And also that we were hiring an additional community mobilizer for the Muslim community and they were and are going to assist that in District Five. I know that that is, uh, in the shoot with human resources. We have allocated the money. We have moved that direction forward. We're just waiting for it to be implemented and, and hire the individual.
Okay, great. And my second question is for Deputy Gill. And it's, uh, the collisions on intersections, they have gone up a hundred and seventy percent, I think they've said, along with a lot of other collisions. I was just wondering if those intersections have ATE or not?
That I would have to get back to, uh, Commissioner. I don't know the exact specific, um, uh, which ones have the ATE, uh, in terms of those accidents. So that's a quick report. We can actually get back to you very quickly. I do know and further to the chief's moment, uh, comments a few minutes ago, uh, our traffic safety team is constantly working with the city uh, of Calgary, particularly the, uh, the transportation, uh, group of, uh, road, road construction road engineers and how they design roads. Uh, whether it's to, um, look at C train, um, patterns, whether it's look at traffic patterns, whether it look at, uh, uh, speed mitigation, um, efforts that they could take. Uh, it's a constant, uh, engagement between our two areas. Uh, we have noticed that it, there has been a higher number of collisions and fatalities in the last number of months than is the norm. And, uh, so our, uh, our traffic team, uh, work with the city team are working on how we can uh, both work on education and awareness and proactive enforcement in and around those areas that are deemed to be higher collision zones.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, before I go to Commissioner Tangay, can I just, uh, going back to the community mobilizer? Um, could we get an update of those two positions in the January report, Deputy Chief Daly? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Tangay.
Thank you for your reports. Um, Deputy Gill, I'm just curious, uh, the November report, uh, doesn't seem to include the public safety snapshot. Uh, is that planning that we're not going to see that anymore and it's up to us to go onto the dashboard, which maybe I'm not inept? May- maybe I am inept. Uh, sorry, yeah, yeah, I, I am inept. Uh, I tried going on the dashboard to pull out that same kind of data. It's, uh, maybe not as easy as I thought it would be to do so. Uh, I'm just wondering if the plan is not to put that there anymore and if so, maybe the plan could be to put it back.
Uh, I can tell you, Commissioner, the plan was to, uh, uh, save ourselves a bit of administrative work by having the front-facing commu- community safety dashboard that, uh, uh, that you will be adept at soon, I hope. Um, uh, but if there is specific things that, uh, you'd like to see in that dashboard that we use to manually prepare, um, we're, we're happy to revisit that and have conversations. Uh, but it really was an effort to, uh, save our limited, uh, the number of analysts that we have. Um, with being focused on the safety, uh, front-facing safety dashboard and save us that administrative tasks. It was a, it was a considerable number of hours of work to prepare that for every month, the, the dashboard that we used to. So, uh, happy to revisit, happy to have a conversation, but that was a part of the plan was to eliminate that with the advent of the one that Ms. Davidson presented on last month.
So I, uh, again, big fan of the dashboard, especially, uh, the ability for Calgarians to review and see it, but I, I don't think it makes it easy for me to review five-year crime data, uh, month after month that we see every time and allows us to kind of see what's, what's happening. You did mention, uh, there was an increase in, in, um, I, I can't remember if it was, uh, okay, so you know, again, it's easier for me, I think visually to be able to see it and to review it. Uh, I understand it's a lot of administrative. I don't know if the dashboard should reduce some of that administrative burden. And if not, then you could see how difficult it would be for us to try to figure it out if an administrator can't figure it out. Um, so I, I don't know if that means the dashboard needs to be able to summarize similarly for us. Uh, and if that's some work to do, but you know, I think that considering we're talking about policing and the whole concept of us being here is to talk about, well, not the whole, but a big part of it is about crime. I know Kelly got quite upset last time about the lack of, of real focus on this. I feel like by not having it there, it even brings the focus down further.
So, uh, Commissioner, I'd be happy to go back and, uh, speak with Rebecca and, uh, Tamara Daku, who's my, uh, uh, crime manager for our crime analog team and see if we could, um, see what options we have to bring some of that information back that you're looking for.
Commissioner Wines.
Thanks. Um, in the human ta- trafficking report, you talk about short-term rentals or Airbnb. How big of an impact are those on the ability to hide sex trafficking?
Thanks for your question. Hi.
Very high.
Yeah, I, I don't have an actual number, but, uh, know that they're definitely increasing and we're seeing more and more of that being used for those kinds of offenses.
Okay, yeah, because I feel like you had also another report and in previous news article, we had a woman kidnapped in Calgary held at a short term in the suburbs.
True.
And now I'm seeing Airbnb again.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and this is my counselor hat. We're trying to come up with bylaws and I just maybe we have to have a conversation on offline where you can help me understand how ru- rules could be im- implemented to actually stop people from being sex tra- sex trafficked through short-term rentals. Um, because you've answered my question. I don't really have a follow-up. It's a massive player and I wish I had another follow-up to expose more of this conversation, but I don't. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Counselor, for those comments and happy to meet offline and have a conversation with the, with my subject matter experts to kind of give you more of a, more of a picture and talk about some potential, potential mitigation strategies and some options we can look at. Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other questions for these reports? Okay, seeing none. Um, as we went through the reports, there were some requests that were made for the service to come back with information at a later date. And so we'll need to put a motion out there to make sure that those are included. So I'm just going to turn it over to Edie Oddland, who actually was making notes as we all spoke and he'll get clarification if he needs it.
Uh, thanks, Sharon. I might have missed some, but, uh, there was a request to include an update in the next crime trends report on community mobilizers from Chair Sadiki. Commissioner Tang is writing his out perfectly. Thank you. Um, and then, um, Commissioner Mallon wanted something related to collisions happening and whether ATE is at those intersections. Is that something you want to? Okay, okay. So yeah, that's why I find you don't have to make a motion if you don't, don't want to. Yeah. Um, and then a question around the District Five Collective for domestic violence. Was that something you wanted to report back on? Or you want to include it in a future report?
May- maybe the collective, uh, collective on violence could come back to the committee.
Hey, yeah.
That's where it came out.
Services Committee. Okay. And so that's a report on what's occurring with the, an update on the District Five Collective. Okay.
An update on the extra stuff that we're going to do in District Five related to the rise in domestic violence. And for the, um, the Muslim mobilizer.
Okay, and that's going to be to the Plesing Services Committee.
For committee, yeah.
Perfect. Okay. Okay, so we'll work on those, um, in the term.
Okay, the first, uh, the first item that we'd like to see brought back is moved and seconded into direct the service to provide a report on the uptick in traffic collisions and how many of those introduction, intersections have ATA automated traffic enforcement. And I think moved by, uh, Commissioner Tangay, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Nice and Jordan. Are there any comments regarding the motion? General for, uh, Commissioner Wines.
Um, I'd, I'd like to also know about Stony Trail. Because I, I know where there used to be one sitting there and I'm constantly counting the number of fire trucks that are now pulling over for more and more damage. So I don't want it to just be a report on intersections. How do we, do we change it or?
Can we amend that to maybe include?
Just to just stop.
Intersections, yeah.
Just an uptick in collisions and then they can give us the heat map. That sums it up.
Yeah. Collisions, yeah, we'll take out that and how many of those in track, yeah.
Maybe just locations generally.
Yeah, yeah, like a heat map of like maybe where you had them and what we're seeing since they've been removed.
I, I think we want the AT part still in there because we want to know the relationship between the two. No, take out those intersections. Just take out how many have
AT, yeah, there you go.
Associated.
Well, I think that'll cover all of it because we didn't, we took out the intersection. So that'll cover Stony, Deerfoot, anything, yeah.
If you just said how many uptick in traffic collisions and how many locations had ATE, that would cover it because lots of these collisions will be between intersections.
Any other comments regarding the motion?
I, I
Commissioner Tangay.
I do agree with Counselor Wines. I think it'd be interesting to see specific data on, um, on the Stony, uh, maybe also, I don't know, uh, probably just Stony actually, because that's the only one that we don't have any cameras and we've been kind of legislated not to do so. So it would be very interesting to see how many collisions are occurring there period and, and overall, if that continues to increase or if that's higher than some of our other freeways, which I know we don't have a lot of.
Yeah, so that's, that's interesting. I'd be interested in seeing that too. I just wondered, did I read in the report somewhere that there's a bit of a delay in data because of E collision? Or am I magic things? Okay, yeah, just a little bit of a data delay because that, now that, uh, information is coming from the province. But nevertheless, uh, Rebecca says one to two months, so we'll still have data. We may not have it right up to date, but we'll still have good data to look at.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, um, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Great, thanks. Um, the next one? When you're ready.
I think the key is, and I'm, I'm, I'm being nice for Deputy Gill is I put a review, so we just want to see like how much manpower does this really take? I personally would be keen to remove review and just say I want it back in the report. Uh, but if it's going to take significant amount of manpower, that actually tells me there's something wrong with the dashboard. Because it shouldn't. The whole point of the dashboard is to make this easy. So if it's easy, it shouldn't be that hard to put it in there.
Deputy Chief Toffick.
Yeah, maybe I have a suggestion as a possible option. Because I know Deputy Gill went to sort of a modified report for this one and we've been in conversation with commission staff around reporting for next year and what maybe commission wants and what might work. Uh, we could seek to bit, do a bit of a summary of what the dashboard highlights would be as a part of that, as opposed to giving all of the data again. But maybe we can do that work upfront, say, here's what we're seeing that probably commission should be aware of. Would that suffice?
Well, I'm going to respond. So, um, if, if this is my opinion, my opinion is I'm less interested in the snapshots and the stories than I am in the data. I would much rather have that data and if it takes too much time to put in the stories, which they're nice, uh, but I, I mean, they don't But I mean, they don't tell me that the true data that we're trying to look at. And I really do feel like without this that we're missing a big piece. So again, I I do think what we have from last month is what I would like to see next month, but I will offer the idea of is that really intensive is something that you don't think you can do? Then then we can negotiate and chat.
Commissioner, can I just ask two follow up questions on that is? Would you want that in a monthly, like every month or could we do that quarterly, would that make a difference for you? It in and and let me.
I'd really like to see what we saw before.
I just look at it in terms of be able to see trends a little bit better in a quarterly report, however.
Yeah.
If you prefer monthly, that's not an issue, we'll we'll work on that. And the second piece of that question was in the format that we've been giving it to you for the past year or so, that's what you're looking for, correct?
I so I've gotten used to it. So and I like the five year trends, I like an idea of what's happening and what's not happening. I mean, we've talked lots about is it the right data and is it not, but it's it's better than no data. And so in my opinion, I like, but I actually like the idea of sure, quarterly, if that makes it easier for you, I would even change all of this to change it to quarterly report.
I think before we request, I'm just going to ask Executive Director Oddland to make a comment because we are changing our reporting format a bit, so.
Yeah, so just as background, we've been in conversation with the service around basically looking at all the reports we're getting and how we can do it better. And if the frequency can change to again accommodate all that we need to accommodate in the committees moving forward. So this might be a conversation that's better to have both later in the meeting, we're bringing forward some suggestions and then in January when the reporting schedule comes. So we can look at it holistically.
I think that's fine, I I don't think waiting for several more months before we get updates on crime is a good idea. We're a commission looking at working with police with some sort of focus on crime, maybe. I think that's kind of important and I I think if we're reducing, there's a lot of reporting that I care a little less about in comparison to this that I'm willing to cut out, but so I'll go back to reviewing how this looks, if that would be okay.
Commissioner Nice and Jordan.
So I initially shared some of the concern that Commissioner Tenge had until I spent a ton of time going through the dashboard and understanding what was available and and there's a tremendous amount of data there. And actually, one of the things I found very easy was the crime overview that actually has the five year comparison current versus five years, so I think that I'm going to be reluctant to to add administrative responsibilities to bring back stuff that is on there. And I think we can discuss it later, but I do think the information is there and that they have done a good job, it just takes a little bit more time to get used to it. Now I'm quickly going to the right place, I know exactly what I'm finding and I can see trends very easily.
I think that's great, so it sounds like it's really easy to copy paste into the report. So there's not a lot of administrative work. Excellent, thank you for that.
So I think what we'll do is we're going to be talking about reporting a little bit later, so I think we'll bring that back at that time and figure out what the best thing is for the service and for the commission to get the information that we need and the timing of it. So we can discuss it a little bit later if that works for you, Deputy Chief Gill.
Yeah, definitely works and I think it's just a little time in to spend with Rebecca and Tamara. And and certainly Counselor or Commissioner not to it's not about negotiation, if it's if it's something you prefer monthly, we'll we'll definitely do it monthly.
Commissioner, I did run.
Deputy Chief, just a quick question here, do you have a traffic data for the dashboard?
HR data for the dashboard?
Do you have the traffic, the number of traffic on that on the dashboard, do you have that number?
I think it's on the traffic. Traffic is not on there, so we have a separate.
No, no, I meant the number of people clicking on the website, people going there.
Oh. 1,000 unique users so far.
Okay, and then do you do you have a trend like is it increasing or decreasing, do you have any information about how public is using that, please?
I'm, we're just a few clicks away from having that answer.
Okay. So my, so what I'm going to get to is that if we, if it is heavily used, then we should not be debating if we need to put more resources to it, so it just comes with your ask. If you need more resources to get it, if it's if people are using it, that's the most important part of it, so.
Very good.
Any other comments regarding ATE? Okay. The next motion we have is to moved and seconded to direct the service to provide a review on public safety snapshot and requirements and for this to be added to the crime update for Bureau of Community Policing. Does this reflect what Commissioner Tenge you wanted? And when would you like this? Okay. January. Okay, so I'm assuming you're moving this. You're moving, you move. Okay, can I get someone to second Commissioner Mallon? Any other discussion regarding this motion? And service, does this work for you? Okay, thank you. Everyone, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. So yeah, okay, we're going to have to count because I didn't catch that quick enough. Everyone who's in favor of it, please raise your hand. Okay, eight in favor, opposed? Three, okay, it passes, thank you. Okay. Next motion, please. And we lost our motion person. Okay, we're just gonna go to the very last one, moved and seconded to direct the service to provide a report to the Posing Services Committee that provides an update on the efforts to address family violence in District Five through the community mobilizers and collective. Can I get someone to move that, please? Commissioner, okay, and I think so this was, this was a mashup of mine and Commissioner Mallon's motion. But I think what we're looking for Deputy Chief Daly is something in January just because this is a very specific question pertaining to your new mobilizers and some work that was happening before. So is that okay for January? Okay, thank you. So Commissioner Nice and Jordan, did you move it? Okay, thank you, and second, Commissioner Hope, any discussion regarding this motion? Okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Next on our agenda are reports from the commissioners who represent our commission on various associations and committees. There are no presentations for these reports, but do commissioners have any questions for their representatives? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the public participation portion of the meeting, we do not have any public speakers today. But I would like to thank everyone that took time to send us a written submission prior to this meeting. They have been provided to everyone on the commission as part of the meeting materials and we appreciate you taking the time to write and share your insights. Thank you to everyone for joining us today. We will now this brings us to the end of our agenda, so we will now adjourn the public portion of this month's commission meeting. Thank you for everyone for coming and I hope you have a great evening. Chief Newfeld and I will move to the podium shortly where we will be available to answer questions from the media. Everyone is welcome to stay and watch our media availability, but only recognized members of the media will be able to participate. For commissioners and members of the service participating in the in camera portion of our meeting, we will take a break before continuing. Please keep this room quiet until the media availability is finished. And if you are joining remotely, please remember to rejoin us using the in camera link, thank you very much.
Okay, perfect, so if we can just get the room silent, if you need to clear the room to have a conversation, that'd be great. And we will begin here. So we will start online, we have CBC Dane Patterson, I'm sorry, I'm probably butchering that name, but please go ahead.
No, perfect, actually, thanks, thanks for the question. Just just wondering about the bear spray report. You know, it it mentions an article that suggests why bear spray is on the rise, but does CPS have its own findings as to why that might be kind of a rising issue in the city?
I would say our assessment would be that after COVID, we saw a lot of people actually out in public spaces and sheltering outside of the conventional sort of shelter system. And I think what happened out there is that people sort of felt like they needed to protect themselves. And so they started using bear spray, which is something that was relatively accessible at the time. And so I think people armed themselves with bear spray. And now that there's more and more work being done, like some of these situations are becoming obvious and the disarming is happening now. But I think the big spike was really around individuals having to shelter outside of the regular system and and feeling unsafe themselves.
Just to just to follow that, like one of the things in the report mentions that the most cases are because of the type of occurrence is typically assaults and robberies, but you're speaking of kind of a different you know, type, seem, so can you clarify that a bit?
Well, I am and I'm not, I guess I would say this. So a lot of the assaults and robberies that we were seeing that were driving some of those numbers were actually among members of the vulnerable community. So again, so it would make sense if they were feeling the need to to protect themselves and using bear spray to do that, we would see that as a mode of of a weapon used in those incidents. But the other thing, just as I'm thinking about this, because it is a good question and it's a complex one. The other thing I can tell you, we're seeing a spike in the amount of bear spray being carried by young people as well, our SROs are seeing that. So again, that's a that's a troubling trend as well. And then, of course, you also have some individuals that are engaged in criminal activities, so robberies like commercial robberies and stuff like that, where they're using bear spray as well, so there's really kind of three things I think driving the spike. One is, as I said, the vulnerable community arming themselves for protection. Then you've got individuals who are actually involved in serious crime that are using spray, bear spray as a weapon, and then also, like I say, we're seeing youth carry it as well, and so we're working on all of those from three different angles.
Okay, thank you, I will now go in the room here to Tyson from CTV.
This one for the chief, just going back to regards to the G seven summit next year, I know this is a big world event, we know that there's a lot of planning as you guys have already outlined ahead of this. What does it look like once the summit actually comes to Calgary, Caninasus? What will it look like for Calgarians every day, I know it's usually a couple days, but this is a process that's going to last possibly even a week or two, especially getting those security clearances throughout the city, so what can Calgarians expect when when it does roll around next June?
Yes, a great question, I think some Calgarians who've been around for a while will be familiar with it from 2002. So it's not the first time, I think we may be the only jurisdiction that will have now hosted it for a second time. And of course, when I say hosted it, we're, you know, the major city in proximity to where the summit itself will be taking place, which is obviously Caninasus. But again, as a major city, like there will be delegations that travel with some of the world leaders that will stay in Calgary. And there'll be lots of meetings and and that type of thing that will happen as well. So this is why it'll be a big lift, lift, logistically, there'll be lots of arrivals and that type of thing into Calgary and the airport. And then people will obviously go on some to the summit and others not, but the city will be very busy. We've seen in the past that these types of events can also attract, you know, protests and demonstrations and this type of thing, so. I would say when we look back to 2002, that wasn't, you know, that wasn't a big feature. But at the same time, the world's a very different place today than it was in 2002, so it's going to be a big sort of multi agency lift and lots of preparation which is going on now. But I think Superintendent Brar said it best, you know, in Calgary, our role or our goal is to try to reduce the the impact on Calgarians in the city as they move around. But of course, probably in the downtown, where a lot of hotels and conference center and stuff like that, we will see impacts there, but we'll do our very best to manage that.
And then just I know there's the cost associated with this, I think back 2002, it was around just north of $200 million for security for the event, I know that was 22 years ago, costs have escalated completely since then. Could you guys expect something maybe in that five to 800 million dollar range potentially? I know Public Service Canada will be funding the majority of that though.
Yeah, so through Public Safety Canada, there's a framework that funds these things when countries host the G seven. So again, early days, so I don't know what the the full budget will be. But I do know that obviously the planning will go in and whatever is required to keep Caninasus delegates and the city safe, obviously, that's that's what will be done. At the end of the day, you know, the number one goal is just to make sure that the summit can go, the leaders can meet and do the business that they need to do. And that in the meantime, the city can still function and and Calgarians can definitely rest assured that they'll continue to have quality police services through that in the way that they do today, and this will be done in addition to the day to day.
And just one last quick, one separate case in regards to that death last week in Pine Creek. I know it's 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 almost a little confusing at this point for police on how this actually happened. What can you tell us about that investigation at this point and what are you guys actually looking for to determine how this individual died?
Yeah, it's the investigation's ongoing, so there's a limited amount that I can say, obviously, and this is pretty fresh, tragic situation for sure. But again, the complexities are such that that we're working through it, I think the big thing that we need is a bit more time. And also, you know, if there's any other witnesses, we've made pleas for witnesses to come forward or anybody who may know anything about what happened at that location at the time, so I guess I would renew that plea for anybody, any witnesses to call police or Crime Stoppers, but but again, with some of these complex ones, typically what's required is just a bit more time. And our investigators will take all the time they need with this to get to the truth on it.
At this point?
So what I would, what I could tell you right now is that that's part of the investigation, that's a very important part of the investigation because manner of death is very important to the investigation to even determine whether or not it was criminal. So these are some of the things that the investigative, the investigative team works through. Thank you.
Okay, perfect, we'll go to Tiffany from City.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Oh, great, I just have a question about something that was mentioned during budget as well as a question about bear spray. So during budget, it was mentioned John Orr had brought up this concern about how there's not enough officers to keep up with population growth. And it was mentioned that the Calgary Police Service tries to recruit around 134 officers a year around there. But you also experienced attrition of 70 officers a year, is that right? What is the reason for that attrition, like is it, does that include retirements? Is it people that go through the recruitment process and then realize it's not for them anymore? Is it like, you know, that lack of work life balance? Can you shed any light on that and do you do you share similar concerns that the union is raising about you know, the burnout and and just, you know, how big the city is growing and just being able to cover all of that ground, right?
Thanks, Tiffany, a few layers there, so those numbers are about right, so again, we've been recruiting about 135 a year. And that's what our capacity right now allows us to recruit. And yes, we do have about 70 people that depart from the service every year. So to your question, that's everything, any reason why somebody might depart, so retirements, resignations, terminations, deaths, it could be anything. The number is not really surprising, like when we look back historically, that's about the number for an organization our size. That's about the number that we can expect in any given year. Now, when we look at the demographic trends, there were in in history, there were years that we Now, when we look at the demographic trends, there were in, in history, there were years that we recruited more and then years that we recruited less. And so when you get, you know, 25 years on from the years that you recruited more, you can expect a little higher attrition rates, obviously, and you can predict some of those things. But generally speaking, those numbers that you're referring to uh, are about right. You, I think went on to ask about um, you know, concerns about the size of the city and that sort of thing. So those are definitely concerns. Uh, we know that the number one concern for members of the Calgary Police Service, when the commission does their employee engagement surveys, workload and staffing. So that's very much an internal concern for sure. Uh, and then when we talk to Calgarians as well in satisfaction surveys, we hear the very same thing. About concerns about the level to which the service is, is staffed. And in the meantime, as you say, Calgary is growing like no other city. So yes, those are all very much concerns and they're all very much on the radar for both the service and the commission. And those will things be things obviously we'll be talking about quite a lot uh, moving forward.
Yeah. Um, and I guess uh, on the bear spray topic, um, like we, we see it a lot with uh, you know, people downtown. Uh, you know, carrying bear spray. Again, like what, what you said was like the vulnerable people. Um, like what happens now if they're in possession? Like, do they get a ticket? Do they get a warning? Does anything happen?
So I would, I would say that it depends. It's context specific. So again, I think Deputy Toffic referred to the fact that it's, it's not illegal to carry bear spray as long as it's not. Something that's a prohibited weapon, like something that only the police could carry. So if it's, you know, commercial bear spray that you buy at your local sporting goods store, it's not illegal. However, the cons, the, the context in which it's being carried and what you do with it is what actually could make it illegal. So uh, I guess to answer your question specifically, different things would happen depending on um. The situation. If somebody sprays somebody with bear spray, they would be charged, I would expect with assault with a weapon. Um, if somebody's carrying bear spray in a location where they shouldn't be. And it looks like it's for a bad purpose, they could be charged with possession of a weapon for a purpose dangerous to the public peace. Those are both criminal code charges. They're very serious charges. Um, now if, if, if our cert teams were out dealing, say with an encampment where somebody was found to be in possession of a, of bear spray. And they articulated that all they were doing was trying to make sure they were safe. I suspect that what would happen would be the bear spray would be seized uh, for destruction and no charges would be laid. So when we talk about the, you know, the utility of looking at maybe a bylaw or something like that, given the spikes that we've seen. It would be great if there was some sort of a deterrent that we had that maybe wasn't a criminal code charge, because sometimes criminalizing somebody for it is, is too much. But other times criminalizing somebody for it is right on the nose. So I think it's very context specific. And our officers are very, very well placed to assess that when they're out there. Uh, and this is why they have discretion and this is where they make good choices um, around what they're going to do in a given circumstance.
Yeah, I was going to say, because uh, some vulnerable people I've talked to have expressed their safety concerns out in the downtown. Um, so you know, I was like, if someone's got bear spray on them and they're just trying to protect themselves, like, I don't know. But um, are there concerns that if bear spray does get uh, you know, through this bylaw, it gets, you know, you get prohibited from having it? Uh, is there any concern at all that uh, you know, more serious weapons will be used by the vulnerable to protect themselves in cases of? You know, just, just danger downtown at night? Or in the day?
So that's, I think that's the bigger issue that you raise, right? I think we want the city to, to be a city that feels safe in our downtown and our public spaces. And our transit to feel safe for everybody so that nobody has to feel like they have to arm themselves. If that's the case now, and, and you're absolutely right, you hear that from some people saying they don't feel safe. So that's a problem. Uh, and again, that's something I think that, that sort of crept up there during COVID. And now it's about sort of disarming. That population that doesn't feel safe and leaving that to the police and leaving that to um, officials ultimately so, so that. Again, people can feel safe in those public spaces so they don't have to arm themselves. I think if, if we're in a situation where people are feeling like they need to do that at whatever level. Obviously we've all got more work to do because that's not, that's not the society we want to live in.
Okay, thanks Tiffany. Uh, Dane, looks like you have your hand up again. Go ahead.
Yeah, just, just back to the, the bear spray questions, uh, chief. Um, just one of the, the. Uh, I'm hoping you can, so one of the graphs here is, is talking about the occurrences involving burning liquid and caustic spray. Um, caustic spray, I'm assuming referencing bear spray, but like when it's talking about burning liquid, you know, what kind of, what kind of situations and weapons are, are those?
So I would imagine we would see a variety in there. It would be things like kerosene, lighter fluid, this type of thing. So again, some of these things are, we're seeing as well makeshift weapons. And part of that has to do, I think with encampments and people sleeping rough. So again, you may have some of those uh, flammable liquids around in order to provide a heat source. And then if you get into conflict with somebody in or near the place where you're camping, sometimes those things become um, weapons. No different than, you know, it's akin to like a, a tent pole. Um, you know, that could also be grabbed very quickly and used as a weapon, right? So it's not surprising to see some of those things, but I think the number of um, weapons that we're seeing is more frequently bear spray. Than it is some of those caustic type liquids and, and flammable liquids.
And you mentioned, you know, some of the bylaws that you hoped to get in place. I'm just looking at the report here. It's talking about how in Edmonton. There's certain bylaws that the city is uh, kind of looking at producing themselves. Um, you, when you're talking about the bylaw before, you'd said, you know, you're hoping there might be something. That uh, you folks could use um, that wouldn't be a criminal charge, but could just like seize the, the, the can. Can, can you talk about more about what the city is hoping to do and what CPS is hoping to do um, as far as bylaws and bear spray?
Sure. I think it's early days on those discussions, so I don't really have visibility into where that's headed. But I do support the idea of having another option that's not a criminal charge. And again, I want to be super clear, there are times when a criminal charge is exactly what's required for some of the behavior. With individuals sort of misbehaving with a weapon. In this case, might be bear spray, but it could be a knife or it could be a club, it could be whatever. So sometimes there's, there's very much um, that's, that's the right thing to be doing. But in other cases, it would be nice to have some other solution that would be short of a criminal charge. But to be clear, it's not as though a bylaw is required to seize bear spray. Um, officers, if they come into a situation where they feel like the bear spray is, you know, in somebody's possession. In a context where it's, you know, it's, it's a threat to public safety. At the very least, they'll, they'll seize the bear spray for destruction.
And so just one last question. Um, you know, I, I was, I was actually quite um, surprised to hear that the, the cases that you found were, were, you know, people experiencing homelessness and the vulnerable population who are using. Uh, bear spray most often is, is what it sounds like. You know, what, what is the kind of, you know, comparison as far as numbers? Is it? A lot of the majority of time, it's, it's people in vulnerable positions and then sometimes it's youth or is it kind of? It's often youth, often people in vulnerable situations. Can I just get a bit of an idea of what uh, um, that, that's like as far as demographics?
So good question. I don't really have that level of detail, but what I would do is maybe encourage you to reach out to our uh, public relations. The people that crunch the data, I'm looking at the aggregate here, but they probably have a bit more color as to what that, what that breakdown might look like, but I don't have it now. Sorry.
All right. Thanks so much.
Okay. So uh, Tiffany, you still have your hand up. So we can go back to you for one final round and then we don't have any more hands.
Sorry, I'm good.
Perfect. And then we don't have any more hands. Thank you everyone and I hope you have a great night.